Give you the whole meeting for August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the order has seventy-two minutes. I would like to recognize that we are on three divided territory, traditional territory of Natchez, Wase, and Green Nation, and the homeland of the Maquis, and that we are all three. Next, to make approval of the agenda. Councilor Chong, Councilor Lambert, if you're all in favor. Harry, I'd like to mention tonight that we have regrets from Councilor McHyver, Councilor Colberg, and Councilor Law. We do have. Presentation.
Yep, they're just joining us.
Presentation four point one is Jacob Hanlon, municipal food waste diversion goal round. Welcome, Jacob. You're on mute.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect. I will share my screen here and get my presentation started. If I could please have the screen sharing enabled, that would be great. Perfect, thank you. Okay, so I believe my screen should be up over there, so why don't I get started? I just want to start by saying good evening, mayor and councillors and members of staff. Thank you very much for having me on this evening. My name is Jacob Hanlon and I am the municipal program coordinator at Food Cycle Science. And I'm excited to be here virtually to discuss a food waste diversion opportunity for the city of Thompson. I believe that my team met some of you at the FCM conference in Toronto a few months ago, so it's nice to be here speaking with you tonight. And I'm going to go over a decent amount of information here in a short amount of time, so I just ask that you stick with me and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. So. A little bit about us to start. So Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company and we're based out of Ottawa and Ontario. And we are one hundred percent focused on food waste diversion solutions. So we do this using our innovative technology called the Food Cycler. Our in-home food recycler is a technology that is sold direct to consumers through some of our partnerships with companies like Vitamix. But then we also put them into classrooms and in schools through some of our partnerships with Eco Schools Canada and some other not-for-profit organizations. And then we also put our food cyclers into the homes of residents within communities such as yours through our municipal solutions. So currently, we are working with many Canadian municipalities to help them, whether they're small, rural, remote, or northern. And we help them keep food waste out of their landfills and out of their garbage stream. So we're currently working with ninety-nine Canadian municipalities across eight provinces and territories from British Columbia to Northwest Territories, all the way over to the East Coast. And we're also working with many communities in Manitoba who struggle with their food waste management or where curbside collection, it just isn't necessarily an option for them. So just to briefly name a few, we have some programs in East and West St. Paul, in the arm of St. Andrews, in Woodlands, and in the town of Neppawah, to name a few. So to briefly go over the problem, so food waste is a issue that is avoidable. It accounts for a large portion of our household waste. And it's mostly made up of liquid, which makes it heavy, makes it freeze in the winter time, and makes it a real hassle to deal with. On top of that, when you put food waste in the landfill, it is responsible for generating some pretty harmful greenhouse gases. And these factors make it so that food waste is a problem that has a strong municipal impact. So one of the impacts to municipalities is that since food waste makes up such a large portion of our waste stream, it is causing landfills to fill up quickly. Operating a landfill is obviously quite costly and there is a lot of infrastructure involved. So we want to extend the lifespan of these landfills for as long as we can. The environmental impact is when you do have food waste in a landfill, it's squished up between tons and tons of garbage and it doesn't have the access to oxygen that it would in, let's say, back air compost bin. So when it's in that anaerobic environment, it's producing methane gas, which is quite a few times more harmful than CO2 to our environment. In our communities, when you put food waste in the garbage, it causes odors, which is obviously unpleasant for humans, but it is quite interesting for animals like raccoons and bears who like to go through our trash. So removing food waste from our garbage eliminates all of these issues and it reduces the overall volume of garbage that's sent to the landfill. So this can save the city on hauling and disposal fees, it can save space in your landfill, and it can save residents on some hassle and any other fees that they might face related to their garbage. So we often get asked the question, haven't we solved this problem already? And while there are green bins, they're pretty common in bigger cities with high population density and the right infrastructure. And they are quite costly and operationally challenging to implement and to operate. Many people in your community might back air compost, and while this is a great solution, unfortunately, it's just not feasible for everybody. It's certainly not a year-round solution, and there's still the concern about animals getting into that back air bin. And then finally, the easiest solution is to continue to landfill organic waste. But as I mentioned there, the long-term impacts there are costly and pretty harmful to the environment. So at Food Cycler, what we've done is proposed a different way to deal with our food waste. And this focuses on making it really easy to deal with and right in our homes. So what we've done is we've built a small kitchen appliance about the size of a bread machine. And you can put in your meat, your dairy, your poultry, your fish, even some small bones, along with all the other food waste that you accumulate on a daily basis. And then you push a button and in a matter of hours, typically an overnight process, you get a dry odorless and nutrient-rich soil amendment that comes out. The best way to relate this is to relate it to a fertilizer. It's not the same process as compost, but it is beneficial to your garden, to your lawn. And it can be mixed right in there with garden soil and benefits your plant growth. The machine can be used anywhere that has a plug. Most people will store it in their kitchen and their basement or even in a heated garage. It has a removable bucket so that the machine can be in a different room while that bucket is collecting your food waste throughout the day. So just to give a little visual representation of what our two machines look like that we use in our municipal programs, the FC thirty there on the left, that has a two-and-a-half liter capacity and we recommend it for households of two people or less. While the Eco Five on the right there, it has a five-liter bucket capacity while still remaining a similar footprint to the FC thirty. And we recommend that for larger households or individuals who just typically generate a lot more food waste on a daily basis. And then I'll just emphasize the process here with this visual. It's an eight-hour or less cycle and it uses between zero point eight and one point five kilowatt-hours power. And what you get is about a ninety percent reduction in your food waste. So what comes out compared to what goes in is drastically different. And that that end product, as I'm going to show you in the next slide here, it still has many beneficial uses. So most common is adding to your garden soil or into your backyard composter. But in some cases, what we'll see is residents will drop it off at a local farm or community garden or if there's a green bin pickup available or a compost depot, it can be dropped off there. Now, from a environmental standpoint, the Food Cycler is a net negative carbon solution. And what this means is that just like planting trees or using solar panels, when you use the Food Cycler as a solution to avoid bringing food waste to a landfill, you're avoiding more greenhouse gases in the process than you're creating. And the same can't necessarily be said for other municipal operations that involve waste collection and typically rely on a large fleet of emitting vehicles. So. I mentioned earlier that we are working with a lot of municipalities. And one thing we've learned is that residents are very interested in this type of solution and they're interested in being part of this environmental solution. Residents are quite happy when they have the opportunity to either pilot or use this technology as their food waste solution. And they're quite happy when their government can bring this into their community. So with the Food Cycler, you get to bring something that's innovative and tangible to your residents and they don't necessarily need to live in a big city to be able to divert their organics. And with the Food Cycler, what we're doing is we're really decentralizing that stream of food waste. So we're reducing waste rate at the source at that household level. Now, obviously with these municipalities I've been working with, we've been collecting data. And to date, we've completed pilot programs in over fifty municipalities and over six thousand households. And the results of the data we've collected have been overwhelmingly positive. We've been able to achieve a significant amount of net new waste diversion. We've had a generous user experience rating of four point six out of five stars. And ninety-eight percent of residents who participate in our programs are going to continue using the Food Cycler as their food waste diversion method. Many municipalities have expanded their programs to more households after initially piloting the program. In Nelson, British Columbia, for example, after two successful pilot programs, they're in the process now putting a Food Cycler in every home in their city of eleven thousand residents. So we have some federal funding that we've been awarded to go towards these programs. Last summer, we were selected as a finalist in Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge, which is run by Agrofood and Agriculture Canada. And basically, as a finalist, we were awarded a four hundred thousand dollar prize and tasked with finding more Canadian municipalities as implementation partners. We're using this funding to invest directly into these pilot projects at a heavily subsidized price, which I'll get to in a couple of slides here. And these pilots have been helping us move into the final stage of the challenge. And that comes with a one point five million dollar grand prize. And any future funding that we do receive will continue to be invested into these programs for Canadians. And any municipalities that partner with us will have the right of first refusal on any subsequent funding. So just a couple of slides here before I wrap up. But just to quickly go over what a pilot program looks like in terms of the timeline. It's typically a twelve-week project. Residents will purchase the Food Cycler from their municipality at the subsidized rate. And then they use the unit and track how much they're using it per week for that twelve-week period. At the end, the residents keep their Food Cycler for good. And we ask them to complete a brief survey so that we can evaluate the program's success and continue collecting the data, such as what I presented there in the other slide. And then we collect all these results from your city's program and we present them back to you in a final report. And this can help with your future waste management decision-making. So just to quickly go over what the cost structure and the subsidy model looks like within the program. Basically, the program works based on the subsidy model where Food Cycle Science provides that initial discount. And then we add in that federal investment from Impact Canada. This brings the price of the unit down by fifty percent compared to the retail cost. We then ask the municipality to subsidize by one hundred dollars per household, regardless of which house, of which unit the household chooses. And then the participating residents who register for the program will choose which model best suits their household and they contribute that remaining amount there on the bottom. And then after the twelve-week program, the Food Cycler is theirs to keep. And just my last slide here before wrapping up and opening up for any questions. These are just some pilot size recommendations. For a city of your size, we would recommend the two hundred household pilot program. And we really don't think there would be any issue having two hundred residents sign up for it. But these are just guidelines based on our experience. We're happy to tailor a program based on your needs, your budget. And we're happy to really tailor that based on those factors and bring the program that is best suited to your community. So with all that being said, we would like to welcome the city of Thompson as a partner in the Food Waste Challenge as we believe that your community would be a great fit for the benefits of the program. And then today, I just ask that you kindly receive this presentation as information. And if there is any interest in partnering with us on a funded pilot program, I'd ask that you refer this to a staff member to work with us to bring a report and recommendation back to council. So thank you very much for allowing me to present and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Do we have any calls, no questions from council? Councilor Lambert.
I know it's a quick question, but I guess the food waste, in addition to what you've already said, I think it would help with some of the recyclables that we're having problems with diverting to the waste disposals rather than to your recyclables, recyclables, because the people are cleaning things up and up. Our recycle recycling center has to throw away all the recyclables that they receive. There's food content in it. And the other thing is the waste diversion is so important to me and I'm sure to the rest of council. Waste disposal system is building up and the longer we can keep this one will save us a lot of money because I'm sure that our next waste disposal site is going to cost us about forty, fifty million dollars. And whatever was that building? So if we can delay that a few years, this would be great. And I'm looking forward to something like this because can fill up my garden with compost. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Robert Hannah.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your presentation. Yeah, I'm interested in this too. I think it would be a good initiative as a pilot project, try the hundred to two hundred households. So yeah, I know for me, I look forward to having the discussions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, I too, calling here, I definitely, you know, think this would be a good project, whether it be the city taking on or the partners with somebody to get this working. I definitely think there's interest here and moving forward and I'm sure we'll be talking again.
Yeah.
Councilor Spitzer.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Yeah, I'd be interested in trying one of these. Give it a go. Sounds very, very interesting and if we can help us with our landfills by all means.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I thank you definitely for your presentation and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much, mayor and councillors and members of staff. I appreciate the comments and I appreciate your time and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Our next is number five, community comment and feedback. And as we have no one in the audience tonight, we want to move on. Next, we're going to report, so first point five, six point one is development.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So I've heard from my update on all of our ISOP projects. So our Roverville and Waterhill project, I've kind of on a monthly basis, just everyone will be able to go on. As you can tell, looking around the city, there's a lot of work underway. So Maple Leaf and AECOM completed their six-foot rotation that I've been starting with seven. They were just arriving at the back of the city lane. We've got work virtually complete on Elk Bay Links and Caribou Road. We've got some of the people under way there. Work is ongoing through the Indian roads, except for Thompson Drive, which we've not started yet. And then anticipate to start four acres on Thompson Drive, probably later on this week. They're currently just working to finish off Nelson and Deere Base School. One bit of note is after a lot of discussion with both Maple Leaf and AECOM with regards to Juniper Drive, so Juniper Drive and the sidewalk, it's all been completed for Oak Street to Spruce Road, Spruce Crescent, which is behind the hospital there. Unfortunately though, due to the water renewal not being completed until this spring, we will not be progressing any road renewal past Spruce to Soccer. We'll reduce, we'll finish that next spring. The reason for that is to allow the settlement of all of the work areas that were recently disturbed. So a big dig in the corner of Spruce, a big dig in the corner of Lastwood, all of the trenching for all of the service lines across Juniper. We want to have the settlement in that area, so we're not putting over that, it's just a thing on us in a couple of years' time. We do understand, thinking, what's it, this causes or no cause? See a lot of the AECOM are trying to work out, come up with a plan to minimize issues. This may include losing dock or putting lawyers down, trying to find a way to keep that road and then do the shape without having to do it. And then through the bridge to shut it. Our additional work on Oak Street that the council approved, one week and a half of those virtually complete. There's just a little bit of a cut-up work around one of the catch bases remaining. And as per my going, we need to keep in communication with the homeowners and also through media and social media, just to try to keep people aware of where the road crews are working. As we progress down, as we progress further, the majority of the work is going to be on Thompson Drive, Drive remaining, what's on the main for that side. So again, the total cost there, my report as well, moving on to water. So accurate HD and STAN Tech, again, worked on Jamaica, the initiative's second rotation actually just started. That's where now, all remaining work on Juniper Drive and the deficiency correction work on Deerwood is completed in early July. That's why we had a little work there. They moved over and started Westwood Drive, which we call the phase two, because they moved on July fifteenth. Currently, actives working on the section of Westwood Drive from Surging to Soccer. Once that is complete, they'll return back to the Surging intersection and look towards Charvet. Hoping that they will be at that Soccer Corner end of this week or the weekend early next, and then they will start the other direction. Pre-plant plan and installation cost of Juniper and the order of all been approved, received and approved. Remediation of Deerwood Drive from Wolf to Caribou is underway. Sidewalks have been installed and base work occurs is underway. I'm thinking about that section of the water report because that is the only section of road that is actually being covered as part of the water. So that section of road from Wolf to Caribou is through Oak Street to the splash park. Were included as part of the watering, so back here it is up to Maple Leaf. Maple Leaf will be doing the work, so kind of working quickly for the two different sides of this project. And again, I'm giving you the total project cost and total project, in sort of total cost and estimate. Right now, with the exception of not finishing the Juniper Road, we look like everything else will get done on a federal this year. The water renewal work for all the better sets and where they're going to be once they get past Soccer. But they are anticipated now that it will be done early October, which is the deadline is the twelfth of October. So they should be getting that, they should get all that. We have written in special language this year with regards to tempers and having the tempers removed earlier this year. The last year, we had some problems with tempers that brings up getting to October, that caused some problems for homeowners. We have basically established that all above rate tempers. That's my report for today.
Thank you. Any questions I have? Councilor Lambert.
I'm still used to community in the whole, as we used to have the public works committee and development committee. So I'm going to try and ask some questions, I guess, that I would have been creating situation. Otherwise, I would have asked you to wait and talk sort of loud. One of the things I, there's quantities that we requested of Maple Leaf, which would be the Juniper section, which now we're not going to be able to do. Is there a section or, and it would be more work for AECOM for us to, to save where they could do some additional lower work to do those quantities? And I'm only suggesting that just because we know how much it costs to get them here. And you know, like we, in Thompson, Northern Manitoba, we pay a huge sum for mobilization devils. And you know, they'll, they'll get everything ready for the quantities that they're going to do. And now for Juniper, is there another section, say on Thompson Drive, someplace where we could do additional work that will use up that quantity? Just a question or something.
Yeah, so what we've actually done, council, let me send your feedback from Oak Street. We've actually gone out and put together a list of other roads and have provided that for some pricing. We do, if you recall, city receives my last sprint for Roverland work, we have until, I believe, and at the end of this year, we've spent that money. So again, we are trying to maximize their time up here and their quantity of material. And they're not able to do that. Try and find some other patches for them to work on. That work would be covered under ISOP, and we do have this perpetual money that we received last year to recover that.
So thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, it was called, the fund that the director is relying on, speaking about it was called the one-time pot wall funding. I believe so. I think it was a hundred and fifty-some thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, something like that. I just want to make sure that I know that ISOP money has to be spent on the ISOP. What were we said we were going?
Yeah.
So much, right?
Well.
I appreciate that and I knew that we had this on the menu. I just wanted to make sure people knew about that. Thank you.
Councilor Spitzer.
Thank you. So you're saying that Juniper isn't going to get paid this year, right?
Correct, the section from Spruce to Soccer.
Okay, so is it just going to be gravel?
We're working on that to figure what we can do, whether we can perhaps put a sacrificial for your coal chip, coal, something along those lines.
Okay.
Again, there is some concern around some of the areas where you've seen significant settlement over the last little while. Or you don't want to take something in there that's just going to settle and crack up and become potentially worse. But we're, we're working on options.
So I agree with that, but at the same time, with the headaches we had last year on Deerwood Drive, if we can kind of mitigate that, it'll be somewhat satisfied the people in the area, I would think. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think I, I too have been driving up and down Juniper, notice some of the things that we're trying to do to mitigate it. So hopefully figure out something that works for the people in Juniper. Thanks, Lyle. Next is six point two is the Thompson Library Report.
This is a report for the second quarter from the Thompson Public Library to council. It's really good for information. If council has any questions, the administration can send those questions off to the library. They'll have those answered for you.
Any questions consider concerning that report? I guess I just noticed the first thing that they have received some funding and the city apparently has want to move forward with that funding. Is that being looked after?
Yeah, so the city prepared a scope of work for that. I believe that we were waiting for their confirmation of the funding. So now that we have the confirmation of the funding, I believe they received funding through the Arts, Sports and Culture Fund, which was recently announced. So now that we have that confirmation, the city can proceed on the library behalf.
Thank you. Any no comments, questions from the board? Six point three is for discovery center report.
Similarly, this is the report from the Board of Discovery for the center for the second quarter. Report is attached along with a number of financials. If council has any questions, we can relay those to the Oral Discovery Center and have those questions answered for you. And I believe Consulor Chung is the representative on that one.
Thank you. Any questions from council? If you have any, please make sure we're getting back. Next, we're going to development. Seven point one is a request from the city manager with respect to a housing accelerator application.
Yeah, so the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation announced a pretty innovative program called the Housing Accelerator Fund as part of their national housing strategy. Unfortunately, they haven't given us much time to complete the application. We have less than a month. What it basically is, is the government of Canada will incentivize the development of different types of housing. And depending on what you select, you get different layers of funding that go with it. And it's basically based on how many houses start to have with the fund versus without the fund. So I believe this year, we might have had one housing building permit. But if this fund is applied for, we could have more, then they will prioritize and incentivize the production of those sizes in the community. I attached a kind of a highlight sheet, just so council can understand how much money we're talking about here. So for every new housing start, the base funding that city would receive is twenty thousand dollars for that housing start. Now, if that housing start is also what they call the missing middle, which is a small apartment block or a multi-unit housing, you could get an additional twelve to seven, seven to twelve thousand for each new housing start that's there. And if the owner then deems that to be affordable housing, there's an additional nineteen thousand on top of that. So you have the twenty thousand, the nineteen thousand plus seven is twelve thousand per unit. In taking into account, council just signed the PUSICO policy development agreement with KTC. And there could be over three hundred units of housing there. If we apply for that, I believe Lyle and I calculated that we could get between eleven to fifteen million dollars for the city that would then go, you could use for building of the actual buildings, which should Which you could also use it for the infrastructure, such as the roads, the water and the sewer that allow you to develop that, or the hydroelectric costs. So um, it's a very exciting fund. Um, we've reached out to other partners in the community, uh, Manicola Housing. Um, and other agencies that are building housing to ask them if this would help incentivize it. If they give us their information back, we will include that in the application. Um, they will require a resolution of council in support of it. And because of the way the timing works, we may have to request, if it's not ready by Monday's meeting, we might have to request a special meeting. But we'd like to put in a resolution with council's approval, um, to try to get this money to help develop the housing in our community. So it's really now for discussion, the council's favorable to it, we'll bring forth the resolution on your behalf.
So with your hands, how many are favorable with this? Okay, the question has a spark from those in attendance. Thank you. Definitely, bit more work to your brain.
It's too good to pass up on. Yeah, mayor. It's like the committee of the whole, um. I know how much work we have going on. Yeah, it's really, really a lot of work with water and sewer and road work, uh, now this housing is, is excited and we need this. Uh, we have partners that we can. Use or, or assist with this funding, but we still need the staff and. Our staff is. Know you guys are past your limits here. Um. I just think that council's got to think what, how, and we should be discussing how we can help. So creating these applications is, yes, we're doing it off the side of their desks. Um, yet you're still running projects that we're asking you to do more with. The money that we have, while we have it. Um, I'm, I'm concerned with that and, and not sure how we can. Direct you to help, make sure, make sure you get enough staff to help you.
I think.
Yeah, there, uh, depending on how much administrative burden there is, we could bring that back to council's consideration under budget. Discuss, does it need, if we were to land this money, would it need dedicated administration for the two-year period? Um, could we subcontract that out to a specialist, kind of like we've done reaching home dollars? Where it's paid out as an overhead from that fund. Um, so those are some of the scenarios we can bring back to council. I know the way it works is they want the city to apply on behalf of the community. But once we get the money, we can literally say, this is for the development of this, hand over that check to the organization doing it, then monitor them. That's still required work, but it means that we don't necessarily have to be doing the work ourselves. Um, like monitoring the day-to-day work, we could be heading down to the third party so that they're doing the work of health. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven point two is a memo from the Director of Development and Technical Services in regards to a land lease uh. Application for lot seven, plan two eight seven five eight.
Yeah, good evening again, uh, so yeah, we received an application, I've actually did a discussion with landlords from the lot, I mean, some cleanup work that had to get done, but. This is a river, riverbank lot on, just off Jasper Drive. So there's, it's uh, about six thousand square feet. Uh, the, uh, the individual is looking to lease a property to as a trailer store and uh. For, for facilities that have a small garden plot. Uh, looking through the uh, the fees and fines table, uh, this lot is actually, uh. If you do the calculation, it's, the lease rate, actually, the minimum lease rate would have to apply is six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Uh, and it will be prorated as our lease rates run from October first to the end of September. We will prorate that for the related change whether to, uh, lease period. Uh, copy and lease, uh, attached to the uh, to your uh, region buyer. This has been reviewed by the, by the DC and, and those in terms of being raised for, um. Like to have a conservative accounting house before going.
Any questions? Hey, I uh, know this individual's been working hard for a long time and I do appreciate that uh, you brought this lease ready and prepared for us. Thank you very much. Seven point three.
So just to verify, there's a consensus, we can bring this board for resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I'm just home by nodding a bit. Seven point three is a memo from the Director of Development Technical Services in regards to bylaw two oh three four dash two oh two three. Being a zoning bylaw amendment for the Thompson Humane Society.
Yeah, good evening, so this is the first of two zoning bylaw amendments we brought this evening to review. Uh, this one was put forward by the Thompson Humane Society. Uh, they have purchased the uh, the building at forty Nelson Road, which is formerly the, not the, uh, area clinic. Uh, and we would like to add a boarding kennel to this facility. Uh, kennel, ortic is not permitted currently to that zone. So the zoning bylaw amendment would go through to add a kennel as a combined use category. In this zone, uh, and can have guest conditional use, which would mean anybody with funds would, we still have to put forward a conditional use. Applications do so. Uh, we have reviewed this with uh, our, our regional planner, flatback. Uh, they've reviewed it, uh, and no issues, and we've actually, that's actually drafted up the, the paper on for the bylaw amendments. So uh. Just to add, uh, as is my memo, there are, there are special requirements for kennels, so not only are we just adding this to the zoning bylaw, but. Uh, that individual replier in this case, the Thompson Humane Society, it would have to be a conditional use, so we have to put a condition, we found a page in board. But they will also revow them in the additional, or I think they're called special regulations. Uh, which are subject to kennels, which are section five point six that are zoning by law. And that's really very clear to them, these are requirements around uh, soundproofing, maximum load valves, uh. Sort of care really aggressive, but there are, people need to crank here, they have certain visits from residents, and this is a strong relevance in the back.
Okay, thank you. I'll start number.
I'll be supporting this, the, their current facilities are across, across the street. Um, so, and we have a conditional use for that one already. Uh, so I don't see, I think holding this back and if they're gonna utilize a facility that's better here. I appreciate their thoughts. The work on it.
Thank you, Consular.
Thank you, Mayor, um, yeah, I'll be supporting this, I think this is a service that, um, there's a huge shortage of, not just in Thompson, but in the north. Um, that many people would utilize, and I think it's great to see the Humane Society expanding uh, the services that they offer in town.
Thank you, Val.
So just to, for Council of Mark, so yes, they're, they are actively across the road on Nelson. That is last part of the emergency shelters, which is kind of different. But yes, they are, they are there. Uh, there was actually a, a, um. Application for kennel there, I'm not sure how many years ago. That's been defeated by council, so they are really willing to use that as a, as a, uh, shelter, emergency shelter, and they would use. This building as their boarding shelter.
Uh, anyone else? Uh, yeah, uh. Uh, I, I think we'll, the noise bylaw will hear the, the down bylaw will be there. Where on Nelson Road, in our location, we don't actually have anybody living there, where we do in the other. Behind the old deck clinic, we do have apartments up just up the hill from it, and we have, you know, the healing center and that, so. We will have to be, you know, we're, we're fencing the difference.
So we actually did measure, uh, with the, with the area of the gas. The required number that needs ordered by law is uh, fifteen, fifty-five old meters. Uh, it's, it's uh, sixteen one point two meters, I believe it is, to the corner of the, of the. The Polaris four building, which would actually be the closest Polaris to that, to that office. So we do, so we did very make sure they're, they have that.
Thank you. So, uh, our show of hands, who wishes to move this on to the next meeting? I will vote. Seven point four is a memo from the Director of Development and Technical Services in regards to bylaw two oh three five two oh two three. Being the zoning bylaw amendment for health services.
Good evening, so this is the second zoning bylaw amendment discussion for this evening. Uh, so if you look at the commercial zones in the city of Thompson. Uh, our, our zoning bylaw currently has listed five commercial zones, of which four are used. Uh, the different zones actually want to stay there in town. Uh, of those, uh, two zones allow health services in the permitted use. And I gotta get a little bit of a beginning, if you all remember what zoning bylaw table looks like, you've got the principal use part, then you've got the accessory use part. Right, so two more commercial zones, allow health services is the principal use of the building, uh, so you can go ahead and do that. Uh, our third area, which is the CMU, the commercial mixed, uh, so. We're not, we're not, uh. Zoning by law would develop a vision of the CMU, which kind of have just had a mixed use. One of commercial and residential, where residential would be your kind of your primary, commercial would be your accessory. See kind of a Huesbury building, you've got apartment blocks, apartments on the second floor, and you've got kind of that street. Uh. Uh, yeah, we're, thank you, businesses on main floor, thank you, um. That vision really never handled with some of the construction we've run in Thompson, we've got a lot of single story in the CMU. Um, CMU is the corner, kind of the corner of Creed Road and Thompson Drive. Where the chicken is and, uh, and if you recall, we have that, we had a one ladder table on Thompson Drive. Training center there, we see you again, not a, not a principal use exception. So, uh, in discussions with Brett Mack, uh, and our chief builder, this guy there, we really would like to align these commercial zones. So if I do so, we'd like to move health services from that accessory use and put it into the principal use. Um, and, and we actually have now a, an application in front of us, uh, from a, from a business owner who'd like to. Purchase property in the CMU to run a health service business. But unfortunately now can't be used in the way the zoning bylaws today. So the zoning bylaw amendment would be to basically remove health services from that accessory use. And bring it up into the principal use for the CMU, it would be permitted, so there would be no conditional use application. So it would be able to align it with every other commercial zone that we have with everything we have in the senior town. That's kind of the, the second zoning bylaw.
Any comments? So is everybody okay with that moving forward to change the bylaw, show of hands? Going to move forward. Number eight is public safety. Eight point one is a memo from the fire chief in regards to sole sourcing, uh, non-destructive testing for cable kit ladder.
Thank you, I just thank you again for allowing me to come and speak here, tonight of your council, I, I changed it with voice, you were looking at all of your, I said, we're here. A lot of talking. Um, I presented a memo on the basis of, uh, if you can recall. We had some repairs done to the ladder after we, uh, had our shoppers drug mart fire and whatnot. Uh, we had some, some blistering, which resulted in moisture getting in, into the uprights, so. We brought in the uh, the technician from Florida and he, he made some initial repairs to, to the ladder. In discussions with him, even with respect to this non-destructive testing, I'll get to the memo in, in a minute. Uh, I've also asked him to check all the other components of the ladder. Under our, under our warranty, the ladder was itself was, was covered under warranty, but all the. Associated parts and components to the ladder were not, including. This cable kit, which according to the manufacturer, manufacturer specifications said that the change of every ten years, which, again, to the best of my knowledge, was not. Bit of an oversight, but again, after discussions, he said. You know, it is manufacturer specifications up until the adjustments basically are underlying, so up to seventy-five percent of the adjustments on the, on the cables. You're within the grammars, you're okay. And secondly, you're not using the truck in, in comparisons to say the city of Woodburn. So that's how we got around the, the ten-year, uh, ten-year murder. However, on the last non-destructive testing by Seahawk back in twenty eighteen, we exceeded the allowable limits on the ladder, which kind of. Through a. We'll say a wrench into it, but it threw, uh, that in the next. Few years, those cables have no choice but to be replaced, hence the number before you. Um, so again, that being said, um, when it comes to the non-destructive testing, that's a requirement. By a third party every five years, so we will within our compliance, so twenty eighteen with the same third-party tester, which is Seahawk. Um, the. Pump testing and everything like that that's included in the overall prices, it's, it's done on a yearly basis through our maintenance program. On our, on our apparatuses and whatnot, so the only. Extra cost other than that would be the actual cost for the cables, cable kit, which is extensive. It's roughly thirty-five thousand dollars, and it has a lead time of twelve, fourteen weeks. Hence the amount coming before you tonight, instead of waiting typically at the next, you know, waiting on September fifth, uh, June ninth, I saved you. Um, so again, um. We do have a, uh, the truck will be down for a period of two weeks or longer. I've reached out to fire chief, uh, Smith in Winnipeg, and he does have a ladder truck to low in the city of Thompson, and it's. And it's downtime, it's, it's, it's the same truck, it's a Quint, except for a hundred-foot reach, it is a seventy-five-foot reach. Uh, but it's donated by the city, but okay, so there's no rental fees incurred by the city of Thompson, only the cost that was, that's not. Reflected on the overall prices, the transportation fees of getting the truck from Winnipeg to Thompson, nice first. So the, the total amount of the breakdown, uh. With respect to repairs of the ladder is sixty-nine thousand five twenty-three thirty-three with the additional cost of getting the rental, the lower truck. Hurt me from Winnipeg to Thompson, which is where we put three cars.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd say that the administration sees this as both a, uh, maintenance issue, but also a safety issue for the community. And would recommend that we proceed without delaying on, uh, what the chief requests.
Any comments on council? Um, I'll start number.
Is there any question about sole sourcing on this? Would there be with the municipal relations?
I don't believe that would be the issue because this is a very rare type of work, there's very few providers of this, so I believe that.
In fact, sorry if I made. The manufacturer of the E one product that we have currently right now, the downtime is further extended. With extra cost that can impact the overall price, so this is a quote from Seahawk with respect to. What's, what's included in this is what we typically pay yearly through our maintenance program. It's the ion pump testing and of course this five-year NTD test, which is a requirement, has to be. So we would be paying anyway if the truck was here and that going out for the year, those costs would still have to be budgeted through. The only thing is this cable.
Yeah, that's my only question is, I know it has to be done, it's not only safety, city and safety for. Like that, and, uh, yeah, so definitely. Want to move forward as soon as possible.
I'll start over. Um, yeah, I had a similar question as Consular Mark regarding sole sourcing, and we have a certain threshold where the dollar amount requires us to. Or doesn't allow us, I guess, to sole source. Do that make?
There is no dollar amount, I don't believe, but was there? Two hundred and fifty thousand, okay. So we're under that, but yeah, it's, it's part of our procurement policy, so.
So it's up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. But just to go back and maybe, you know, with respect to the memo, sole sourcing is probably not the best language. Simply because one of the, one of the stipulations in this product is any additional products that have been purchased has to be purchased through the E one U. So they have exclusive rights to one person to possess that truck. As they can purchase it through a third party, and ultimately see how these buyers that can get from E one.
Thank you, anyone else?
You're done.
Okay, I do think that being a safety issue, that it is very important, it is taken care of as soon as possible by show of hands, who's willing to support this? Here. Next is legislative. Nine point one is the Valley Gift Agreement for Juniper Park, Anthony?
Yes, so this is more of a housekeeping item, so, um, our directors that applied for the Building Sustainable Communities grant for the Juniper Park. Uh, total budget they're looking at was about six hundred thousand dollars, and they applied for a grant of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, the city received the three hundred thousand dollar grant from the province, and we continue to look for matching funds. Valet is offered to provide matching funds of up to a hundred thousand dollars towards the project, so. They've sent along a gift agreement and requires a resolution of council, the recommendation from the administration to report the resolution. Uh, approving the administration to enter into this agreement, so we could take the hundred thousand dollars and put it towards the park. And we've included some rendering so that you can see what the park's gonna look like.
Thank you, uh, comments?
Right, looking forward to this, uh, definitely supporting it, uh. We took up the pool a couple of years ago, I'm glad that we're continuing to date our parts, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there a timeline on when the project's gonna be started or done or completed or?
Yeah, so it was supposed to have been started and completed this fall, but we've been told because of supply chain issues, they can't get all the parts up to us in time. And they don't want to do any of the water features too close to the winter, uh, for the risk of freezing those off, so. It appears that some of it'll be done in the springtime, so Director McLean will have an update for us on that, and then probably by next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I too, let's, I'm looking forward to this, uh. It's great news for the area and, uh, hopefully we can do roller parks like this.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do, I do think that the way we've been upgrading our, our water parks and the parks in general, this is a, a nice step forward with the partner. Uh, like Valley starting up typically, and I look forward to getting it started. So I show that since we need to have this go forward, the resolution. Nine point two is a review of the retro cost repayment scheduling agreement. Uh, for the RCP.
Yeah, this was received from Public Safety Canada requesting council to sign it off. Before we could even have a chance to meet and review it, um, this is for the repayment schedule of the retro cost due to utilization. Um, my recommendation to council is that we delay on any signatures. Then I send this off to the lawyer that we've hired jointly with the city of Selkirk and others. Just to review our options on this prior to council meeting, you need to consider. Council's already said they intend to pay what is owed, um, that anything that is properly owed. Uh, but that you've directed me to seek a legal opinion on our options, so, um. Really just looking for council's direction on how you'd like to proceed, if you'd like to sign it now, how it is, or have me send it to legal.
Uh, Deputy Mayor? Uh, thanks, Mr. I'm all for delaying, uh, with the legal advice from the joint lawyer, sure.
Uh, Councilor.
Colonel Deputy Mayor Valentino, I'm also the, for decision, sure.
Yeah, anyone else? Agree?
I agree.
And I, uh, I too, with everything that we've been, you know, what I'm doing for with AMM. Uh, and FCM and that, I do believe that we have to do our due diligence and do our homework before we sign it. Uh, if everybody's supporting, uh, with Anthony and not signing this, please put your. Okay, we will not sign it, as is, I think, as are lawyers, sure. Nine point three is an email from Nick Croats, Director of Policy and Communications AMM in regards to the RCMP body worn cameras.
So this is really to be received for information, it's, uh, information from AMM. As well as the RCMP on any of the progress that's been made on the body worn cameras program. Um, as we all know, this is something that was mandated by the federal government, Prime Minister, that the RCMP will be having body worn cameras. Some of the initial purchases will be by the RCMP or Public Safety Canada, but then associated costs will become the responsibility of this municipality. So it's really just for your information, and if you want me to follow up with any questions, I can do so, uh, by an AMM.
Uh, thank you, this is definitely on, uh, discussion at, uh, another AMM and, and that conference as we came to this. It will just, uh, listen and wait, I'll buy out of this for sure. Nine point four is an email from Western Financial Group. Uh, in regards to the Association of Man to Municipalities, General Insurance to Learn, a piece of policy, Anthony?
This was originally sent out to all the municipalities earlier in the year, requesting that a piece policy be put in place. Um, the way it was rolled out was problematic, um, and communities were not ready to adopt it at the time. Because they had to have sufficient time to review it and then develop the procedures and the training and the records. Um, AMM, or sorry, the Western Financial Group is pushing for this to move forward. Um, the administration's brought forward a draft of the policy for council to consider. As well as some information from the city of Dalton on how they proceeded. Um, so just looking at councils willing to take a first stab at a policy, so we have something on the book. Then we can work with developing the training to go with it. So my recommendation would be at this time to adopt a policy, but make it along the lines of the city of Dalton.
Deputy Mayor? Thanks, Mr. Yeah, so I support you guys mentioning this, it's similar to the city of Dalton, but I also think it's worth noting. That this rolled out January twenty-third, and they wanted it to place by February twenty-third. It was actually our CEO that took the initiative to stop that kind of a timeline and. You're required to put it, right? So, uh, which was good and good work on Anthony's part, that's done properly, because it's a lot of work. To put a new policy like this in place, to get the training in place, so. Yeah, I support moving forward and creating this piece of policy, but it's also worth recognizing the work that has to go when it has gone to get to this point. So unfortunately, it has to be done and, and, yeah, so, gonna have to say, um.
Any comments about it, Congress?
So there's, there's new attachments in here, there's one, it's the city of Thompson draft, are you looking for? Feedback from us on that draft at a certain point or before a certain date or?
Yeah, if council would like to make comment on it, we could, yeah, so if that's a preference, we could have council provide a comment, maybe by. Pick it, we'll send it up by email, a date in August, and then that gives us time to bring it back in September. Um, at the next committee level, because we won't have another committee.
And that's the draft version that you've been.
That's right, there, there's a city of Thompson draft, but also consider the city of Dalton.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody's okay? Thank you, yes, and thank you for all the work Anthony has done off the side of his desk to develop. Nine point five, this is my little grand apple that I was telling. Letter to City Manager, Manitoba Liquor Gaming Cannabis Authority, Manitoba, Anthony?
Uh, this is a letter from, uh, Liquor Gaming and Cannabis Authority. Informing the city of Thompson that they'll be closing their inspector's office in the city of Thompson, uh, to make the enforcement more efficient. So it's really a letter for information to council. Um, I anticipated the council would not be happy of this report. Especially seeing the number of liquor issues we have in this community, and as well as, uh, an AMM initiative that we have is. To stop closing offices in, um, rural communities, so this will be another closed office, so. It's for information, but if council would like us to action it, um, through policy or through lobby campaign, it's something that we could follow up.
Also, we're. Thank you, Mayor. Um, can we consider responding to the letter, um, and just expressing our concerns with, with closing of the office and the issues that we have with. Um, liquor and substance abuse in our community and, uh. It's not really more efficient for us to not have, um, have staff in our community?
Yeah, we can certainly request, um, send that a letter off to the department. Um, and we could also, if council wants, invite them to meet with council to explain their decision or have a discussion about it.
Councilor.
Yeah, I think we have to respond with this, um. I'm pretty sure that our liquor store that supplies liquor for fifty-five thousand, not the thirteen thousand residents that we have. This is. That's a blatantly lie that could possibly be more efficient. But we don't have a liquor inspector here. One of our problems is. There's, there's nobody making sure that people are overserving. There, there's so many issues with the liquor situation that we have in the city. And then saying to us that it's gonna be more efficient and not having an office for some of the areas, it's crazy. We also know that our liquor store probably makes more money than any other liquor store in this province. Can we ever go and have a liquor inspector? I, I have a lot more things to say, but. Uh, Councilor said that if we send a letter, um. Need to be able to talk about this, they can't hold that, this. It's not right. It's, uh, we used to have two, we're supposed to have two. Supposed to have one, okay? That's then directly, so this is craziness, this is again, or, uh. This is one of our major issues, they're making it off and off of this, and, uh. And we gotta deal with the social issues that come with it, this is our first line of defense. It's not right, it's, it's, it's blatantly wrong, so. And happily, I, uh, have a few sense to, to what we say in that letter to them, let me discuss this and shouldn't be happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Okay, so when I saw this letter, uh, my thoughts exactly were, you know, uh. Why we, we're supposed to have four liquor inspectors, two full-time ones. And usually they used to have a contingent of four, that two of the part-time ones, they did the socials, they did the other things and the regular. Uh, inspectors did bars and they to ensure the regulations on being followed in restaurants and stuff, and we haven't had that for years. Even the two, never mind the four, but my thing in this, and they said, well, it's. How, how can it be easier to work with, so everybody can be working from home, you can't find them? It's hard enough to find the number now, and I know one of the liquor inspectors that is working with Thompson right now is very, uh. He's, he's out in the public, he's doing his job, he's, you know, close some businesses, though, we're serving them that. So we're starting to climb up to where we need to go, only to get kicked back down to the bottom of the pole again, so. I personally, I agree this letter has to go right away, telling them it's not acceptable, uh, calling for a meeting in person, showing them our issues. And then saying, so how many more people are you going to give us rather than closing an office? Well, thank you, I'm. Uh, provided a rant, but, so I think we're all in agreement that we value it. And, uh, for the office, some people, by show of hands. Thank you. Nine point six, municipal relations bulletin number two oh two three dash four in regards to the new planning act. And, Anthony?
Yes, it's to be received as information from municipal relations. It's their bulletin to all elected officials and its chief administrative officers. Just basically letting you know that they've released their new planning act handbook, there's a link there, if you want to look at the planning act and learn more about it. The number of the changes that are made over the last few years, as well as them letting us know that they're gonna continually update it, so there'll be another version coming out later this year.
Thank you, comments? Yeah. Nine point seven, municipal relations bulletin two oh two three dash one nine in regards to municipal economic development infrastructure work.
Again, this is another bulletin for all elected officials and CAOs, letting us know about this program. Um, this is something the administration's gonna look into and see if there's any funding available to apply for. Um, so we're just looking for more information on what's out there, and then, um, if there's something to be applied for, we can bring it back to council for resolution. Uh, to support that application. But it looks like it is funding a number of innovative things that it normally doesn't. Putting disaster prevention, mitigation, and climate resiliency, which could be things like, um. Buildings that are affected by climate change, but it could also be a fire smart program, it also looks like they're doing fire stations and related capital projects. Um, as well as roads and active transportation, so I know councils have priorities on, uh. Multi-use pathways and all sorts of things that are normally not funded, so once we get more details, we'll see what is available. And as you also noticed, there's solid waste management and organic waste diversion, which we had a presentation on this evening, so that could potentially also be covered. Once we have the details, we'll, we'll be bringing it back to you.
Thanks, Mr. Still, there's all, there's two parts that we're gonna get to per capita funding, and then we can also apply for the funding. So when administration looks at it, and I know we're looking, I need all the stuff. Can you look back at our strategic planning workshop on what the direction of this council was to see if anything would fit into this? Because this is great, October sixth.
Any other comments? Again, we've been very successful with our grants of late, and I think, uh, it's thanks to Anthony and Lyle and the, our staff. Having all doing their homework and working so hard, of course. Again, we appreciate it and, uh, we do appreciate the money that comes through the city that is going to be included through the, thank you. Nine point eight, a letter from Minister in Sports, Culture, and Heritage in regards to funding through the Thompson Fire Department.
So the city is in receipt of a letter from, uh, Minister Khan, the Minister of Sports, Culture, and Heritage. Letting us know that we are recipients of a million dollars of additional funding towards the aquatic center project, um. To the arts, culture, and sport and the community program. Now, so it's a good news story, I know that my administrative team worked hard on this, I believe also the, uh. Swim North, um, Community Fundraising Group worked hard on putting this, this grant application together. I believe they requested five million, we received one million, still very excellent news, and gets us one million dollars closer to making that project a reality.
Yeah, thank you, any comments from council? Now, again, uh, great news, uh, said one million dollars closer to the finish line. Uh, with that, I would like to just pass a thank you out to the Thompson Fire Emergency Service, the RCMP members. That were in the world firefighter, uh, RCMP games this past week in Winnipeg, there was people literally from all over the world. Many Manicola, not just from Thompson, we've been happy with that silver, but many Manicolas, metal, the, uh, loan. And basically, uh, even just from our perspective, uh, there's been people that are traveling up to Churchill, up to Thompson to take the train from all over the world. So it's, it's no case Manicola, it's definitely great, thanks to all our spectators from Thompson, they're for down, who's even a couple volunteers apparently, and that they're from Thompson. Thank you to the city of Thompson and the North Manitoba for, uh, being a part of this, thank you for Winnipeg and all the team that put it on together. And with that, I'll call for, uh, adjournment. How was it, Patrick, Councilor, all the favor?